Call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Just begin by saying pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation from the public, in person for the school committee. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding that's provided for in the order. Reminder that persons who would like to attend this meeting, while progress may do so by calling 1-574-218-0185 with 10-242-878-190. That is the opening. We're going to begin tonight with public input. Doesn't seem like there's too many people from the public here, but if there are any members of the public that would like to address the school committee on anything that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do so. Hearing none, we move on. Usually we start with student report, but I don't believe we have any student report tonight, is that correct, Dr. Daley?
We do not. The students were just recently elected, and I hope to have everything set and ready to go for our next meeting of the Governor's Committee.
Very good. We'll be on quickly to get everything up to speed. So, school reopening after Daley, do you want to?
Almost up. I can begin talking and get that going. So, just a few updates. We have had, I believe since our last meeting, we have had a second and a third positive case, the third one coming this evening. So, just to recap, we had one staff member at the hood school, we had a student at the middle school, and then today we had a student at the hood square. And so, you know, our process has been very collaborative and cooperative with the town. It's been very efficient, I will say. We have a process now where when it comes to our attention, usually it's the parents bringing it to us, to our attention. To date, to clarify, none of these events to date have been transmitted at school that we're aware of. Everything has happened, the students or staff have received the notification because of another family member or someone at home where it's come from. We're still trying to get all the details from today, as it just happened around 3:30 today. But we bring together our team of the nurses, the public health nurse, the director of public health, and town administrator, chiefs, anyone that's available upon the meeting. We huddle, you know, for about 10 minutes or so, discuss the main issues, make sure that we have all the details around the current case review, such questions as who are the close contacts, were they on the bus, are they participating in any after-school extracurriculars? That helps me to fine tune the message that I'm able to put out, and the close contacts are then contacted. So, we've learned a little bit from each experience. Today was actually the first one that happened during the school week, the others have been on the weekend. And so, today was the most efficient, I think, because it was during the school day and also because it's our third one, and I think we've gone from each to the other two. Able to give just enough information not to, you know, reveal anything that's confidential, but to provide people enough information so that they know what's happening in the situations. Not sure if everyone here saw that message, but are there any questions that you have about any of these updates?
So, my only question, well, I'll reiterate what you just said slightly differently. So, you're saying none came from the school transmission at school, presumably from the last two, there were no close contacts that, you know, ended up getting it from those people, correct?
Correct.
And then, for the one today, was a student in school, and then at the end of school, we were told, or was it a student not in school today?
The student was not in school today. That is my understanding. The student was not feeling well over the weekend, they were not in school today, and then once they were positive, that's when everything kicks in. So, the things, we do not, you know, you do not begin quarantining or close contact tracing until someone tests positive. So, that's...
In terms of close contacts, and the last contact that student went ahead in school was on Friday.
Correct. So, you trace it back to a certain number of days from when that, when that happened.
Anybody else have questions about locations? Any other updates on learning or anything else about?
So, yes, so thank you. So, the, you know, things are going well. I've had a great opportunity to observe several classes. I've seen many different things that have been going on. You know, we had an opportunity at one of our parent advisory meetings that Mr. Avriano, Mr. Buckley attended, to hear from the parents, the parent organizations, and some of the other organizations about how it's going with school reopening from the parent point of view, which was very helpful. There's been a lot of positive feedback that I've received, several, you know, a few questions, I'd say, as well, about some different scenarios that we're trying to address to continuously improve what we're doing. I still feel that overall, the community is very thankful that we're in school and that things are going well, as we're getting into, we've been in school for over a month now, just a little bit over a month. There's definitely questions that parents are asking as they're seeing the differences between classrooms. And so, what I think is important to communicate to everyone, which is what Mr. Buckley said as well, is, you know, it's very important that we keep in mind how far along our teachers are and what they've done for students. And I think it's important that we realize too that we've seen two, two things emerge in two different ways to look at it, from an instructional point of view. And one is, we've seen some teachers that have used a lot of their classroom time to teach both the students in front of them and the students at home, and they've had some different ways of approaching that, they've had some different tests. There's other teachers that have made some decisions, especially, I think I've seen this in the younger grades, where they'll say, "We're going to do something's whole group, and then we're going to break off more and have students at home working independently, and students in the classroom working with the teacher." And what they're looking at there is that it's somewhat easier to really maximize what you're getting out of the students in front of you. What I'm hearing somewhat from some of the teachers as well, and sometimes the students in front of you are also on their computers, so it's essentially like everyone's remote, and then is that, is that the best use of the time when the students are actually in front of them? Right? So, there's, there's a lot of learning, there's a lot of exploring, there's sort of an essential question that we have, that whole concept of flipping the classroom, is really what do we do when the students are in front of us to maximize the fact that they're in front of us? So, it's a little bit different this year, a little bit of a different way to look at that same question, but it's an important one. So, all of our teachers have two goals this year, one around social justice and one around hybrid teaching and learning. So, what we're going to be exploring over the course of this year is, first of all, hopefully around November 3rd, when we're going to spend time at our PD Day exploring this, we have identified some best practices. So, teachers are going to be sharing with each other who's had success, what are the pros, what are the cons of different approaches, and what's working and how it works. And what we're hoping to get to is the idea of, if this is the best practice that everyone can work towards, that we can identify on sort of a scale, where am I on that spectrum towards, towards meeting that goal, and how can I make that my goal, that, you know, I'm going to be in a better place in December than I might be in October, in a better place in February than in December, so that we're working toward it? Because there's a lot of variables. Some people are just, A, very comfortable with that approach, very comfortable with the technology, the technology that they have works, there's different variables that are, that are coming into play. So, you know, I think it's very important, I guess my message to the community is, you know, we should be very thankful with all that our teachers are doing, and don't compare too much what's happening in one class and in another, because that can be, that can take away from the greater goal that what we're trying to work toward here is all of our teachers and all of our students improving. And some of those, you know, teachers that may not have the tech working in their room are still learning it, are still adjusting, they're going to get more time with our digital learning folks, we've posted for remote learning assistance, we have other ways of trying to provide resources and support to all of those teachers. And I will say that, you know, we do have some grants that have helped us with technology, we do have some other purchases that have been made, but I think it's important for everyone to understand as well, everyone in this country right now is buying more computers than they've ever bought before for schools. And so, the back orders and the demand on all of these devices for teacher laptops, for student devices, and for everything is behind. So, we're trying to, you know, we were out ahead with a lot of our orders, and we were able to get things like devices for students, but there's going to be a backlog in some of the devices and supports we need, and certainly if things start to break as we try to replace them, we're facing some of those backlogs. So, orders that we were told would be here by mid-October, it's now December, January we're hearing of some of these things. So, I think it's important for everyone to be patient and realize that there's never been sort of a run on technology the way there is right now in this country. So, that's happened. So, I think that's important to share. You know, I've been able to get down to the field and see a couple of sporting events this week. I think everything has worked very well. I know that it will share with the school committee gratitude for the effort to the committee to really look at the spectators being allowed. I think that the ultimate plan that we came up with, with the home parents being able to participate and to complete the screener has worked really, really well. I was there at the game today, everyone is way more than six feet apart, you know, there's plenty of room for people in those stands. The visiting teams are able to go in the fence and be from outside, but it does allow for those home parents to be in the stands cheering on their, their team, which I think has worked out really well. And so far, so good with the, with the tool, I think, has worked out well. So, all good there. Thank you to our athletic director and high school principal for making all that happen. One thing that I want to share out, we've also got the extracurriculars starting, you know, we're at this point now where a lot of our outdoor classes are still happening, but we're starting to come inside. So, we're looking at trying to figure out what the next steps are there. I think it's important to share that at this moment, you know, I don't see winter sports beginning right after, we'll talk about this maybe a little bit later as well, but I don't see that winter sports are going to start right after Thanksgiving break as they have in the past. At the very least, we may need more time to see what can happen with some of those indoor sports and activities. We are looking at the ways that we're, and what, what classes are going to look like for band, for music, for chorus, and for phys ed as they come inside. Those are all going to still happen, obviously, but we have to really think about what kind of activities, what kind of spacing, how can it be done safely? And both, both groups are very well aware of what is possible and how to make that work. So, we're well, we're well aware of those things, and we're working on them. And at the high school, I think everyone is aware that we are putting on a show for the community that our high school math for students are doing, and it's a sort of a stroll where folks buy tickets in advance, and they're able to walk safely and socially distance in small groups, basically all around our entire campus. So, it's, it's a small offshoot of part of a show that they had last year with the haunted playground, and the students did a fantastic job coming up with this whole idea. And quite honestly, the civic project aspect of what they had to go through to plan this out and to go and, they had to present at the Board of Health. So, just think of what they're learning as students, all the key people that they have to talk to, from the police and the school safety officers, fire department, just for the regular permitting piece of it, but then the additional Board of Health kind of requirements that they went through this year. So, you know, hats off to Mrs. Kane for a great program and for leading that, and really to the student leaders that were, you know, so articulate in expressing their, their ideas and getting them approved by the Board of Health. So, that was, that was fantastic. One thing I just want to share in, in closing here is, you know, I mentioned last time about the school calendar that we have is designed for a typical school year, none of that and the breaks that are in there are not designed for maybe what we're facing this year. And I certainly, the teachers have done a fantastic job, they are, they are really putting themselves out there, working very, very hard, and doing something, you know, for all of us that have stepped through, you know, a day of, of online meetings, one after the other, after the other, it's exhausting in a way like we've never felt before. And I think our teachers are, are getting to a point where the anxiety level is getting a little bit high, and anything that we can do to try to think about ways to lessen that anxiety, I think would be very helpful. I've also been hearing from some parents that have asked questions about what are we doing to quarantine, or to, you know, what advice should we be giving around travel or quarantine around the holidays? So, a thought that was suggested to me today, part of what I try to do is have good two-way communication with our staff, and a teacher actually suggested an idea today, which was a little bit different than, than something I had thought of before. So, I want to share that idea with you now, and if it's something that there's an appetite to discuss, I would suggest that we possibly discuss it in our next meeting in more detail, and possibly vote on a change to our calendar to accommodate this idea. I have shared this with our administrative team, and they sort of, all of them agree that this is a good idea for what they're sensing in the buildings right now, and to make sense. So, the, the basic suggestion is that we look ahead to Thanksgiving week, which is the days leading up to, we always have a Wednesday dismissal before Thanksgiving, so the two days going up to that, and that half-day Wednesday would be full remote. So, we would let folks know well in advance that those days are remote for everyone, teachers, students, all students. So, essentially, what that allows you to do is to, for families, staff and families to make the best decisions possible about quarantining and holiday gatherings, everything they're going to do. So, the recommendations are obviously, don't have large groups to, you know, to live and travel, but this would allow any of those conversations, because essentially, at that point, because you're not coming to school and you're working remotely, you can really keep tabs in your immediate household and watch for symptoms, and you can really see whether people have gone out or done anything. You could quarantine if you wanted to, starting on that Friday, leading into the Thanksgiving holiday. So, that's the thought there. This year's calendar is kind of unique in the way it's set up, and then we have a very similar structure leading into the Christmas holiday as well. It's a Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday dismissal is what's in our calendar. And so, the suggestion would be to do both, let people know now in advance that we have the, that those two and a half days are remote, and then the rest of the week, obviously, is a part of the, the break. So, we, you know, the administrative team thought about this, talked about it a little bit over the course of today. We feel that that might go a long way to, to lessening some of the anxiety that our teachers and staff are feeling right now, and a lot of the parents as well. So, that's something if we want to just discuss for a moment, and then if we feel that it's worthy of discussion, we can bring it forward again next time with the idea to adopt the calendar. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Any thoughts?
Thank you very much. So, why don't we start with that, and then we can talk about if we have other questions on opening? Anybody have any thoughts on the full remote days for, before Thanksgiving?
Sure. This is Rich McGowan. I think it's, I think it's a sensible idea, and I like being responsive to the sort of anxiety in the building. Our next meeting is potentially scheduled for November 5th, I believe. Do we feel like that's enough time to formalize that change and give everyone notice?
It's a good question. I'm thinking that, I mean, it gives you at least three weeks, that's a Thursday, right?
Yeah, it's like, so, so two and a half weeks before the Monday, the first change would be the Monday, yeah?
Yeah.
And that may be, I'm just throwing it out there, is, is that enough time? I think...
I think we've decided on it, I think we've done, okay, we did a half-day change last week to the week before.
Yep.
So...
Well, I think if you were changing it to the opposite, where you were remote, and then now you want kids to come to school, it would be a, a different thing, but I think two weeks is a good enough notice, that, hey, you can stay home and...
Any other thoughts, students, on Diana?
I think it's reasonable, especially, you know, anything to help the teachers feel more comfortable, they're going through a whole lot right now, and it's really stressful. I can say from a parent perspective, I actually think it's a good thing for me, I'm sure there's other parents where, you know, the notice would be helpful for, you know, child arrangements if they do have to work, so the earlier we can get it out, the better, but, you know, I'd rather my kids, you know, home that week, I think a lot of people take it off anyway, and it makes a lot of sense.
Correct. I agree, I think it makes sense from a health standpoint and from a mental health standpoint. One, one thing that stuck up to me is that for both the week before Christmas and the week of Thanksgiving, it's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and we might want to see if it's worth juggling, it's going to be the same cohort twice.
Yeah.
It kind of, not robbing, but then that's like six days, taken up, so if there's a way to balance that, that might be nice, but in general, I think it's a great idea. How's one?
I just think, I haven't looked that far into it, Steve, but we would want to make that balance as, as we can.
Yeah, I think, so, I mean, for my thoughts, this guy, I think balance is a big thing, you know, about making, and I know they were already looking at, they were going to be Thursday, Friday, but either way, so they were adjusting the Wednesdays, I think, to account for that, so they'll probably just have to readjust, because as it was, it was going to be one cohort was there and one cohort wasn't. Now it'll be none of them are there. I mean, my thoughts are sort of two. On the one hand, I think we should do whatever the teachers want to do. I mean, whatever the administrators and teachers think, I don't think it should be the school committee that's holding that up. I think if the administration and the teachers and the union agree on something, we should pretty much agree with it. And so, frankly, I feel like, you know, like the educator's job to think about that, and if they think this is a good idea, I don't think we should stand in the way of that. The only question that I would have about the education is cohort C, you know, about especially kids that have special needs, like my son is in cohort C. I know that, you know, the other day he had to stay home for a day, and it's, and again, I was, I was the paraprofessional for the day. I had a day off, and I was there for every class, and I think that's the one group that I'm slightly worried about, and I don't know if there's a way where, I don't know, where anything could be done, where even if, you know, the supporting lab was open or something, if somebody needed to come in to do, to do remote in the school, maybe not in the traditional way, I don't, I don't know if that's an option, but I don't, and there's not a lot of kids that are in cohort C, so I don't know that we should not do something because, you know, 20 kids across the district need something different, but that was the only thought that I had was, you know, a few kids that might get a lot of additional services, how would they, you know, how would they take those, you know, additional six days? So, but ultimately, I think you, ultimately, I think if you come up with a plan that the teachers' union and the administrators are behind, I don't think you'll have, have anybody in this committee voting against it.
Correct. It's a good idea, and I will bring that back. My thought at this moment, though, is just for the purposes that we're trying to do this, it would just be for everyone. And I think even if, you know, I didn't, you know, I think this is the one situation where I'm thinking it might be for, even if we were closing for other reasons, we might still try to do something. That's the thought. To be completely honest, I haven't talked to the NRA about this yet, or the parents' union, the youth brothers unions yet. I imagine that they could be in support of something like this. I have talked to them about doing something to address the, you know, just the levels. And I think it's just something we're hearing in society, I think there's a lot out there in the media about, you know, rise in cases, and, you know, there's just a lot, and I think everyone's just, just feeling that. And also, you know, it's very hard to compare to other districts, we, like I said, we're over a month, there's a lot of districts that have just started to go back now. So, they're, they're, they're going through the same issues that we went through in, in August and September, but I'm going through some different kind of issues that we're feeling. And I think to recognize that they've come quite so far, and I think having those little, those two pieces there might really provide some, some help. So, right, so that's something that sounds like I could put on the agenda for next time for us to discuss further.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts on reopening from anybody, questions concerned? You know, the only thing I was just going to add is, you know, as, as Dr. Daley mentioned, Janine and I were at the parent advisory meeting, and I just think it's worth noting, as Dr. Daley just alluded to a bit, that every district's different right now, and we need to do the best we can to make North Reading plan work as well as we can, but it's also worth recognizing that North Reading is in a very different position than a lot of other districts around here. And so, I'm on the list served with that, school committees, and we see, you know, we see everybody talking about trying to get plans to open, I mean, school districts are talking about how they have elementary open, they have a plan to open middle school in November, and they don't even have a plan for high school, they don't have staffing, they don't have, you know, agreements with teachers, and, you know, I think, I think it's just worth noting that even if there are things that need to be tinkered with and adjusted, that we're very fortunate in North Reading, and we have a lot of buy-in from all the different groups that are at stake here. I mean, and I cannot emphasize enough how important it's been to have these, I've had a lot of great discussions over the summer with teachers and the teachers' union working with the district to really make this work, and, you know, it's just, I don't know, for me, I would just say I'm so grateful and thankful that our teachers are doing what they're doing, and we all wish, we all wish we could be back normal, but until this passes, it's important that we're all on the same side. So, I just, you know, just for the parents that might be listening, it's important to understand that, you know, everything that's happening right now, there's a lot of discussion going on, and the teachers are, are behind this, and they're working with the school districts and the administration to try to find the best plan possible.
Hello, Mr. Buckley?
Yeah?
I have one more thing, which is that, it, I was talking about, I was, I was thinking about this earlier, when we got the, the notice of the, the third case of a, of a person in the community, in school community having COVID, and it occurred to me that every time that happens and it doesn't spread, that's a very clear sign that we're doing an excellent job in terms of how we're executing our plan, that it makes sense that it works, we're taking it seriously. And, you know, you can't stop a agent spreading the people, but containing it like we've been doing, I think that, I think we've done an excellent job so far.
And, and just to hear that the student today had some symptoms and didn't come to school.
Yeah, exactly.
And I, and I know one of the issues that's coming up right now is maybe kids abusing and staying home when, you know, there's not reasons. I've seen some emails from principals about, you know, if you're, if you're feeling well, you can't just oversleep and instead decide to take a remote day, but it is important to do it. I mean, I will say from my own personal experience, last week, you know, last weekend or Columbus Day weekend, one of my kids had a running note. I was like, just a call, but from the pediatrician, got a COVID test, kept him home until we got the negative result, just to make sure, you know, and, and I'll tell you, as a parent, it was like, you know, by Monday, he was perfect, or Tuesday, he was perfectly fine. He was running around the house like, and by Monday, he was fine, but we hadn't gotten the test yet and, you know, be overly cautious in these situations, because you never want to have a, you know, you're pretty sure it's a call, but, you know, you just don't know for sure.
Yeah.
But I think overall, people are taking it seriously, and they're doing the right thing.
And I'll just reiterate too, what I put out in my email about travel, and, you know, we, we are doing something a little bit different in our schools that's a little bit above a governor's travel order, which basically, the travel order says if you travel out of state to a state that's not a low-risk state, so anything that's colored red, you need to produce a negative test, or you need to quarantine. There, there is language there that children under a certain age do not need to follow those rules, but we are saying all students, regardless, need to produce that negative test in order to come back to school. And I just want to reiterate here, as I did in my email, that it's, you know, it's not really about that student or your family, it's about what that means for the big picture, right? So, it's about trust. We've built trust with all of our teachers and all the staff that are coming into school every day, and we have to trust that if people travel, they're going to do the right thing. If people are feeling sick, they're going to do the right thing, and that's why completing that daily health screener, having a conversation with the nurse or the principal, if there's any questions, is, is key. And, you know, 99% of the time this happens, but when it doesn't happen, it very quickly becomes a situation that the trust is broken, and all of a sudden, the whole conversation is in question, right, about what, what we can do and whether we can continue to have schools we're having. So, it's very important that everyone continues to follow those rules, complete that screener before you come on campus, and have any questions that you want to discuss with the nurse. So, please continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, for new business, we have large capital presentation. Turn it over to Mr. ...
I'm going to advance the slides on the screen as well, so... So, in your packet, you should have had a PowerPoint as well as the five-year capital plan that we've updated to reflect projects that have been approved, and, you know, we've made some alterations to the plan from last year to reflect the most up-to-date information. So, I'm going to try to move through the slides relatively quickly, and then we have time for discussion and questions at the end, there is, there's a lot to kind of go through. I'm going to touch upon some of the capital projects that we've completed in fiscal '21 as a refreshing reminder of some of the items that we were able to get done and improve this year. I want to focus the conversation on next year's projects for fiscal year '22. I'll give you kind of an outlook about the next, the next three years, fiscal '23 and '24, which is what the CIIPC will focus on. At the end, I'll touch upon their timeline and process this year, which has been pushed out a little bit, and then we'll all certainly get time for discussions and questions. We're not, tonight, you're not looking for an endorsement or a, a... We're not, tonight we're not looking for an endorsement or a vote of the plan. We're just opening it up to give you the information, give you a chance to digest it, ask some questions. And then next time we're together, what we ask for in official vote and we'll see if we have to make any changes as we, as we go. So as a reminder, fiscal '21, we were able to get the F-350 pickup truck, the 2009 vehicle approved at the June 29th town meeting. So that was a positive thing. We have ordered that vehicle. We did that in July, soon after town meeting. They built this vehicle from scratch. We placed our order along with the Department of Public Works order, both ordering the exact same vehicle. We're told it's on pace to arrive in the beginning of December. So hopefully that happens before the, the snow winter season. Please to report that the fall town meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we did receive two other facility related projects approval. The little, little school HVAC upgrade that would focus on making improvements to the C wing of the school as well as to the hood school handicap accessible chairlift, which was 30 years old and needs to be certainly replaced. So we are in the process, we've actually already ordered the, the chairlift. We're in the process of actually submitting bid specs. We're putting together bid specs for the HVAC project. It does need to be bid as it is over the threshold of the cost of that, that project. It is a chapter 149 project. It does require bidding. So we're in the process of hopefully getting that out soon. Questions?
Yeah, quick question on that. What's the timeline on that? Will that be for this year still for the week? Cause I know the funds have to be in the year, right?
So right, so that, that will be for this year. So we'll be able to hopefully move forward on these and get these completed as soon as possible really. So the, the goal certainly for the HVAC project is to be, is have that completed as much before the winter season as we can. But it does have to go through the bidding process. So that, that will take a little bit of time there. And then there's an update on the LED lighting project. So everyone knows that we do have the LED lighting project underway. We didn't, we kind of did that separately outside of the CI PC process to sort and to not, to kind of secure the funding for other timeline projects. So we're sort of leasing this project. We expect that project to be completed potentially by Friday of this week, maybe early next week. They're on their final school, which is the hood elementary school. We're a little bit behind timeline, but certainly things, things happen. They're a little bit delayed here and there. But the project all in all has gone really, really well. And I'm already seeing, and I forget the October electricity bills, that they're saving there. Usage is down 25%, 30% in some areas. And it's definitely, you can tell right away that the savings is gonna be real and it's definitely there. So that, that's tweens. And I think the light looks great actually. I've walked around some of the buildings. This is a picture of the most of the high school classroom. But a little bit of fresher light, a bit of a more natural light. And I think, I think it looks, looks great. I think it's provided some much, much needed brightness in certain areas.
Are they, are they still on budget even though it's over time?
Yeah, they're still on, yeah. So that's kind of, that's actually fixed for us. Okay, so make sure you don't have the liability there. Good. Some other projects just that we did during the summer. Part of it was COVID-19 related, but some other kind of capital items. We obviously did some upgrades to, and repairs to a lot of exterior windows at the bachelor school and the hood schools. Those projects are completed. So now all the windows are kind of operable for ventilation that, for some of those window projects at the, at the hood bachelor school, mainly the fourth, fourth floor and the hood school classrooms. We replaced some exterior doors at the little school that just needed to be replaced. We did some of these festival capital projects over the summer. We did those major HVAC upgrades and all those projects are completed. So we did the ionizing project at the middle school and the high school for additional mitigation of, of ventilation and exchange of air. So that project's been completed. We did sort of a similar approach at the bachelor school, but we opted for the kind of the UV lighting approach to those rooftop units based on the size of those units. That project's been completed. And the hood middle school was upgraded the MIR-13 filters and all those classroom unit ventilators and rooftop units. So in some areas, the rooftop units at the bachelor school as well. So we, we made some, some upgrades at the HVAC. Majority of these funds are being COVID related. So we are using the CARES Act funding and the reopening funding to support this cost of this project, but certainly capital related. We did install two additional security cameras in this building at doors 30 and 31, which is on the, the academic wing of the high school because we're now using those entrances regularly. That was a request from the police office, police department. And we did one pretty quickly on that and got those up and running. So we have two additional security cameras that are tied into the police department's feed as well, live feed. So just some other items to make you aware of. So we look at, just a reminder, we're looking at large capital now to greater than $25,000 with a useful life of more than five years qualifies for a large capital project. We generally are looking at vehicles, technology and facilities. Most of our equipment acquisitions follows small capital furniture and some of the smaller technologies. But this is the three areas that we tend to look at for large capital. Here's a quick snapshot of the three-year request that's been revised. So you can see kind of vehicles, pretty consistent amounts over the next two years. Same for technology, a little bit higher next year. That's partly because some projects were deferred from this year's process. And then on the facility standpoint, we're doing our best to kind of strengthen, even out the need in the later years, starting in fiscal '24 and even '25 or '26, we look at the five-year plan. We start to look at some higher cost items, potentially like the middle school modular replacement for that, that classroom. Potentially hood school boilers, hood school boiler project and hood school roof restoration. All three areas are relatively good condition right now. So we're gonna continue to assess these as we get closer. But there's a good chance we might be able to continue to kind of push those off. I think the boilers are in pretty good condition. The roof, we've made some small repairs in areas, but they're definitely items that are gonna need to be addressed probably within this, this five-year window as we look at our large capital plan. So I'm gonna focus on technology for fiscal '22. We have two requests. The first is the annual allotment of $60,000 that we did not get this year. But we feel it's very important that we establish a computer replacement plan in ongoing amount of about $60,000, we feel is needed. That will essentially work to address both replacements for both student devices as well as teacher devices. So there's a need in both areas. We were able to acquire and accelerate through some state funding through the advocacy of Brad Jones, State Representative Brad Jones, who helped us get some grant funding to buy some Chromebooks for the one-to-one initiative, as well as through some technology grants, potentials grants through the COVID-19. There's a relief process in the reopening grant. We've been able to kind of accelerate our need to buy additional Chromebooks for student devices. So we've been accelerating that one-to-one initiative. We're almost one-to-one throughout, throughout the district essentially. So there's definitely a need to replace these devices as they reach the end of their useful life and to have an ongoing allotment of about $60,000 to replace them. We've started to purchase staff devices for last ops, which have been aging out, they're breaking down. Someone have a 10-year-old. So we're gonna need an ongoing allotment to, to ensure that we have the, the funding to, to upkeep these devices for both students and staff. In some cases, the classroom Chromebook carts that are spread throughout the schools as well. We need to make sure we have the funding available. We, we, okay, our vision is to kind of shift up the one-to-one initiative, which is so embedded as part of our curriculum. We acquire the seventh grade new devices and so forth as part of our operating budget. But we need an ongoing allotment for, for large capital replacement. The second is kind of a continuation of what we look to, to, to do in fiscal '21. The technology was deferred as part of the town's school capital plan. As the town only looked at the most pertinent kind of facility-related school safety, you know, general safety, emergency-related facility and building projects. But we still believe that there's a need for this $45,000 allotment to replace instructional classroom equipment, mainly smart boards that are in the three elementary schools that are past their useful life. Most of those are repurposed classrooms from the middle school and the high school. They're broken down. They need to be replaced in many cases. So they start to, to just wear down, wear down. We're still using them even though we're kind of hybrid. They're still used every day. Still a part of our, our curriculum and our, our instructional process with technology in the classroom. So we do need an allotment to, to replace these devices. This would have been the number one on the list had the plan gone forward as, as typical. This was the highest-ranked project, uh, project through the CI PC this past year. So we feel it's important to continue to ask for these, for these funds. I think the ultimate vision is that we're gonna pursue moving to like a one-fit-all interactive board that kind of replaces the forward head projector, the smart board and the teacher kind of press-on of the desktop. We think we can go to an interactive board through HDMI connection or even a Chromebook casting or mirror with the teacher's laptop to, to meet this need. I mean, you're only maintaining one piece of equipment. As opposed to maintaining or replacing the projector balls and the desktop, you know, press-on in the classrooms as well as the smart board. So that's the vision that we'd be exploring with some of this, certainly with some of the, the funding that approved.
Nice. Quick question.
Yes.
Is that because the technology has increased and we got with the, the smart board?
Uh, yes. I think the technology has advanced certainly in the last few years. That the, the interactive, you know, more, I think it's a lot, it's more affordable now than maybe it was a few years ago. And I really think it just makes sense with the technology and your ability to kind of cast to that board and so forth has come to a point where we think that's kind of the next, you know, where we wanna be in, in the future.
Some of it might not be able to be done because this technology is just bleeding edge, just coming out right now, right? So some of it is still, smart is still a big player. So we might be able to do some smart board replacement early on. But then as it goes on, we are starting to look at these other systems that are, that are kind of combining it into one.
Right.
It, it does look a little different, it's in different ages as well to what these are, but.
So they go maybe having some piloting from classrooms with the new tech, newest technology.
Just out of pure curiosity, would you start maybe with the newer boards here at the high school, middle school, where the technology is a little bit more advanced? And then take the smart, smart boards here and move on to the elementary?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, no. And the smart boards in the elementary are definitely most in need right now. And these are still working fine. And it, we kind of built these here, just to be clear to you. I don't ever see us moving these out. We can just start to replace things here to add on. So we, like, if you, the boards at the middle high school are not interactive in themselves. So the boards themselves would go there. It's just, it's not, it's not a smart board. They're not, they're not touched. So the technology that, that is used in that, we can just replace it differently.
Good.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
So a, a couple of quick thoughts. I mean, number one, I know what you were just talking about. Like the more we can make it easier to, to be able to teach the line and people at home is better. Because again, I think what we're learning is there, there might be something, this might be going on for a while and there might be something in the future where we're gonna have to be able to work from home as well. But my, my bigger question is just on the numbers. I don't think the numbers you're requesting are nearly enough. I mean.
They're not.
Well, because.
And I, this is about a third of what we need. And that's how we pitched it for many years, is that we would do it in small chunks. It's at least $200,000 to do the upgrade of the elementary schools. But this is, this is.
If even the device replacements though, like before, the whole idea was to have, what? Seven through 12 with devices?
Yeah.
I don't see us going away from K through 12 having devices. You can't expect that when a kindergartner gets a device that they can use it from K through 12. So there's going to have to be two sets of devices. So as I see it, you're gonna have to be buying devices for kindergartners or first graders. And then you're gonna have to be buying McGinn for seventh graders. So every year you're going to have two sets of Chromebooks that are going to have to be purchased for two grade levels. And then the replacements of the one, you know, that, that capital on the way. And I, I just, I just think it's not nearly enough.
Yeah. And this doesn't cover that. This is, this is only covering the classroom test. But there's, there's another item that I think might be coming up to talk some more to student devices. But you're absolutely right. From a general point, we, you know, doubled the, the staffing also. I mean, we talk about taxing out our teachers and our, we did add a technician, which is great. We have some, but those positions need to carry on in the budget beyond the COVID piece because we're not just gonna all of a sudden next year, you know, all the good things that we've learned from, you know, having younger kids using devices and all that we will do, we're not just gonna say, oh, we're not gonna do that, right? So we're gonna need to support all of that in our class.
I mean, I think it's a, it's a great question. I think we've been able to acquire quickly because of some of the federal funding that's there. So I, we definitely feel like we need an ongoing amount. It's not gonna be in the operating budget. It's been in the capital, through the cap, large capital process generally. And, but I think your point is good. I don't know if the amount allotted here long-term is going to be enough given the amount of devices we have. I don't think it's gonna be another source. If we're not gonna be able to get funding kind of into our operating budget in some ways to assist. But we definitely need an allotment of money through this process right now through CI PC. The $60,000 has been the amount that has kind of gone in support through that process.
But that was seven through 12. And so I, I honestly don't think it's nearly enough. I think we need to say the $60,000 number that CI PC's used to hearing is for seven through 12. We're talking about K through 12 now having devices. And so we need, I, I don't think we can, I don't think we can do it. Like, I mean, the operating budget's gonna have to support some of that. And there's gonna be some from CI PC hopefully, but I don't think we're requesting nearly enough for all the, all the stuff we're gonna have to do.
So to say that another way, if we're going to be giving, so up to now, it's been a project to try to get everything up to speed. Now it's like giving them a book, right? It's like we, we don't go to CI PC for books. We, we buy them as part of the budget. So I'm, we gotta figure out how to get that into the.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've always tried to find that balance. I think certainly next year, because then we, most of the devices that we've acquired are gonna be new. And, you know, but I think in the future, as we revisit this in the year to year.
Right. So you're, 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 you're fifth and sixth graders that, I guess, so we bought them for fifth and sixth grade this year, right? As well as everybody else. But they won't need to be given new ones for seventh grade. No. So there is some time for rare to some. But the long-term plans that clearly have to be.
This, $60,000 supported about one new grade per year. What Scott's saying is correct. And if we were to say, it's a huge stretch to say that we're gonna get five to six years out of a Chromebook, life is around four. We've definitely had more success than that and I hope it with new generations. But even if you said six, you're at least doubling that now. So it's, it's at least 120 to replenish kindergartners when they get to sixth grade and the sixth graders, the seventh graders to get.
We, we started having 60 in the operating budget. And by the way, you need to, you need to place the order now. Somebody was still waiting to come in.
Yeah.
Quite honestly.
We're gonna play it now for six years from now.
But, but on the fall.
With a point 12 taken, I think, I think there's, you know, I think we do need to be one-to-one, K through 12. And we need to make sure that the devices are working and that we have this plan. We can't do it all in the operating budget.
That's something we need to start communicating by the line. And, and, and the communication with it.
But the one thing, the one thing I would push back on though is I don't see this quite as like, like textbooks. Because the CI PC is there to look at infrastructure and building stuff. And technology is a big one. A lot, all the other departments in North Reading do the same thing. Their technology like, again, it's not built in to replace the computers every five or six years to their annual budget. It's built into the CI PC budget that when their computers get old, they get replaced. So every computer in this district gets replaced, usually through CI PC, because it's a, it's a long-term thing that the annual budgets do not support. And so again, we've been able to do that. And I, and I hear you know, we have to find that balance here. My only point is if right now we're talking about buying for one grade, I think we need to double that. I think it needs to be buying for two grades because now we're, we're not doing seven to 12.
I guess my question, I guess my question is. Is, is the C I P C and the financial planning team sort of, this is, do we need to do, do we need, do we need to start? Uh, asking these questions there and saying, this is not, you know, the, the, the one-to-one initiative. Which was one seven to twelve and now one to K to twelve. Is not, you know, a seven-year project and then we're done. This is, we, this is going to, we're going to be here every year for them.
Yeah.
And, and that's not typical of C I P C's request, as I understand, so. And that's fine, if that's the best way to keep doing it, but. We don't want, all of a sudden them saying, well, we gave you fifty thousand last year, so I don't want to do this.
We certainly needed the amount. It's, it's not too different than the town has received thirty-five thousand. In computer device replacement on an ongoing basis. That's been supported by the C I P C. Where at least kind of double that and that is because of what's gone on. And we have so many more devices. I think once the dust clears, we'll see what happens to the operating budget. I think we have, I think we may need more and I, I think it's true, I think that's going to have to be adjusted, if not this year down the road.
And there's one thing to replace staff devices and to look at, you know, double the amount, but we have more than double the staff. But now, just forget about the staff number, now you're adding twenty-five hundred students on top of that. So it's just. There's just a lot more to make. I think it's, I think it is a balance trying to, you know, I think we have to support it. The question becomes at the financial planning level, like moving forward, are these things, where, where do they fall and who do they fall to? I mean, it's not, it's not something that we can just cut something else from our budget.
Right.
I think that's, that's.
Yeah, for sure. And I, that's, and that's probably one of the reasons why you were reacting strongly. I'm not suggesting that we all of a sudden move it into the budget and then we have to find, find room for it. But we just have to make it as a town, as a planning process.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, the, the other part of that is that like. As, as a town, I mean, I don't know that every town, I don't, I've totally been in North Reading. I don't know if every town does it like this. Some towns might allocate more to the schools. And then the schools can build in capital projects.
But these are the questions we're going to have to.
Yeah, whereas what we have done in North Reading a lot of times is we try to take some of the capital projects separate. And have a group throughout the town have a certain amount of money, a certain amount of funding to allocate towards that and. All I'm saying right now is for, you know, device replacements, replacements, things like that. The last few years, we've talked about things, the assumption has been on seven through twelve. I, I think the assumption going forward is K through twelve, even if everybody's back at school. Full-time next year, the learning is going to be different. We're going to develop different models. Like I see my second grader at home using a Chromebook and, you know, in a way it's like it's sad that she's not at school, but there's, it's also. Pretty amazing that she is pretty, is becoming pretty good with a Chromebook and you don't want to like.
And, and not going to go back to third grade and stop using it. And those devices are also getting used more than they've ever been used before, right? They would have been brought out for, for a half hour lesson for typing or something. Now they're being used all day, every day, cameras, microphones. So many more things that can, can go wrong when they're getting used that much. So it's really that replacement cost that we think about a lot as well. And just to, just to be clear, and I, I know this has been established, it was said a few meetings ago that. You don't need the smart boards as much as all of the Chromebooks, but it's absolutely in hybrid and I've seen it every day that I've gone in. It's essential that you have both, because if you're fully remote, the smart board is not as supportive, but. When you're in the class every day, the kids are watching that smart board in clouded at home and it's. It's, uh, it's really an incredible tool. It's in some ways being used more now than it was when we were fully in person.
And so let's go back to that because that's where we started, right, was the smart board allocation and. And, uh, you know, it certainly is critical and you guys talked about this already, but that. You know, what's the future of the technology is that we get a handle on that as soon as possible so that. So that we're not spending more times buying the smart technology, which may or may not be the best. The future in, in every school.
Yep.
And everyone.
And I withdraw my comment from two weeks ago, Patrick, okay?
No, I just, I just wanted to.
Oh, what?
Not firing.
I think the advocacy, but I think the awareness of the folks on C I P C and private clients, you need to understand that, that we're in a different situation.
Happy to come take a visit.
Yeah, yeah, well, for, for video visits.
I know.
Okay, so that's kind of technical. So some more to kind of think about there. Appreciate the, certainly the experience, great feedback.
I, I do think for this year, we should think about that honestly, when we're, when we're. When we're putting our initial request, then I think we should think about. That good K through twelve, then, you know, maybe when we come back have a higher amount for that one, for him.
Okay, well, go ahead. Definitely. Okay. Um, so the, um, next is I talk about vehicle requests. We have two vehicles requests, but the focus on fiscal twenty-two. So this, this was kind of in the plan as, um. That was put together and, and to consider a second multi-function vehicle acquisition. Um, as you may recall, we did purchase, um, one a couple of years ago. Kind of had the ability to utilize that for about a little over a year and a half. We have seen certainly saved significantly in our transportation costs for athletics. Certainly used elsewhere, extracurricular, I know, uh, performing arts programs have used it numerous times. We definitely have a need for a second vehicle. I, I, I think that's certainly clear. I think if we had a second vehicle. And now going to be able to put more teams, more runs that are just a little bit larger, larger teams. You know, basketball and a variety of more teams allows us to have that much more ability to take. Um, more transportation runs, more in-house, in-house. And really even, um, experience a greater level of savings. So we've kind of found that there's a sweet spot for every vehicle, it could be between forty and fifty runs. Would get transferred from outside contractors to in-house. Which we're on average paying about three hundred dollars, in some cases a little bit more. Again, this is a big year. Those costs could go up next year, um, with the athletic and extracurricular transportation. We think that range is between twelve and, you know, fourteen, maybe on the high end fifteen thousand dollars a year with each vehicle purchased. So the payback is very small. We're looking at a less than, you know, four-year payback. Um, we'd be willing to take the approach with C I P C, which I think they liked the second time we went for this vehicle. Is that we would take that year one savings and offset it. Um, and then from there on, we experienced full savings. Uh, which would mean the cost of this vehicle has really gone off to about fifty-five thousand. Four or five years ago, and we're hoping it might be forty-five, but it really is. It was, it's really about fifty-five thousand right now, so we could take, take that amount and only request forty thousand dollars with one approach. Which they sort of liked, um, and did help us get the support and I think get this project over the hump a couple of years ago. But I've talked to, um, I've talked to Dave Johnson and we definitely feel like a second vehicle would be certainly helpful. I've talked to Allison Keenan about it, I've talked to the folks on North Reading, Horns Productions. And I, I think they, they feel, um, you know, two vehicles are needed. So, um, this request is kind of on the table for fiscal twenty-two.
Chris?
Um, Michael.
Yeah.
How has COVID kind of affected the usage?
Right, so it certainly, it hasn't impacted it on the number of ridership. So right now, we're, we're still following the one student per, per seat.
Right.
So there's only about seven students riding on, on this vehicle. So the golf team has used this vehicle this fall. They normally would use this. And that would be all they're using.
Yeah.
Uh, they're actually using this vehicle now in the backup spare special education van. Um, because they want, they generally want to transport about ten, ten, um, athletes to a competition. So they have been doing that, um. And believe it or not, we've actually been using a, a, uh, second shift custodian that has a seven D license and all and. To also help transport, uh, this year with the athletic event. So it's been, it's been the coach driving this vehicle and. The second shift that takes about an hour off is, you know, he leaves the high school, middle school for an hour and drives and comes back, works. And then goes back, picks up if he has to, um, and that's allowed us to do that.
Chair, but Michael, is, uh, is it, is it fair to say that if we did have this, we really would have had challenges to have the support of the games?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I see it even with COVID more than ever. I think we just like having that flexibility of us having control of that transportation. Um, with the, the team and the coaching staff can kind of follow their own schedule. But now I have the mercy of, um, the contractor that may have to fill, finish an elementary run that has limited drivers. There's not a lot of, um, bus companies right now that have the ability to have separate charter drivers. So what you, what you're looking at is you're looking at a driver that has to finish, in some cases, an elementary run. I know we've kind of swapped that this year, but in some, some cases, an elementary run. And then get back to the high school, or finish that, a late high school run or middle school run. And get back, so they're kind of waiting at school and it's a challenge. Um, because of just the shortage of, of following bunch drivers that companies are facing with. So having that flexibility, um, I think for a lot of these teams. The true, true really kind of puts us over the edge, that we can now do varsity and JV basketball team throughout the winter and, and a variety of things that is challenging.
Thank you.
I, I think it's, I think, I think with this being the next vehicle, you have a payback of less than five years. I think it's a no-brainer to consider. I hope that.
I agree.
It's a, it's a.
So the next vehicle, we, we are kind of revisiting our request for a tool pad. Um, as you know, Sonny Kemp Hagen, the director of facilities, has now been with the district. Um, since the middle of August, so we've been here about three months, had a chance to kind of review and see, see the operation and. Make some good recommendations. He continues to kind of clear out himself as a district. I think he's doing a really great job. Um, and believe it or not, first thing he said to me when I'm moving over the plan, we're making adjustments to it, you know, pressurized the plan. He said, you know, why, why don't we have one of these vehicles? I gave him the history of, that we, we tried to make one of these vehicles. Uh, didn't get support for two or three years, so we kind of took, we kind of took it off the list. Uh, we actually, believe it or not, were told that we would eventually get one through the F F N E of this campus. Never ended up happening, but we kind of originally thought that that might be the case. Through the F F N E budget, your money that might be left at the end, so that did not happen. But we feel, and from what he's looked at, that having access to this type of a vehicle. For sweeping, obviously snow plowing, front, front loading. With grounds, facilities, obviously snow removal at this campus, landscaping needs. We think we can save significantly about, not only on manpower with overtime costs coming down. With, right now, we're usually, we have four or five guys using the push snowblowers, doing the sidewalks. Going all the way down that stretch, down the hill and, and up and all around this campus. That could be done in half the time with a, with a vehicle, with one guy, um, with a vehicle like this, so. And then just even with the ground and, and the sweeping and different things that we're doing. We think this would be a significant upgrade of efficiency and cost savings to our operation. We're willing to share it with the town, certainly the D W have access to it at times. We've offered that. We're willing to do that as well, but again, it's hard, we think it's less than four years, uh, as well. So they're actually pretty helpful video link. I don't, I don't know if you want me to share it. You don't need to do that, you're going to watch it at your own time, but there's a good helpful, two minute video link there.
Hey, my only other comment here is. If for some reason it can't be funded, this was one that I was wondering, should we even consider trying to get it ourselves? Because it's so many hours that we're talking about here, like.
Yeah, I think, I, I answer that as saying yes right now. We, we, we came close to doing that. Uh, we actually released a used one for a year, for six months. Um, and it was great having that. Uh, it was a very old one with a lot of engine hours and man hours. So it wasn't worth it to invest in it, or to buy out the lease, it would have been thirty, thirty-five thousand to buy out at the time. But we just wanted to experiment with it. Say, and we had it for four or five months and it was great, but it just clearly had hours on it. Um, but I mean, they can be leased and we can pursue that. Um, but it would be great if we could get the support and we get the savings right from the beginning.
Yeah, but I just, I just think for the, we're asking our custodians to do so much right now. And we need them in the schools. There's so much extra cleaning that is needed. That if we could support them, like when winter months come and they can.
Yeah.
It'll be so much quicker for them.
I agree.
You know, to do it, like.
So we, we've gotten some additional ground assistance and, and we actually feel like. If we had this vehicle, we could now have the, we have the manpower to put to, um, to one individual that can be in this vehicle. Doing the sidewalks, doing all those areas, and then we could have the access to have two, two or three plowers. We can eliminate all of our outside contractors for plowing. Um, which we're, which we currently, we do contract out with some of the towns bidding through the bidding process, some of the towns flower. Um, you know, Warren Pears and Smith and Sons that do some of our others, other schools. We feel like we could save almost all of that out, which would be a significant savings. I mean, this, we think this is actually conservative savings, by honestly.
For this game.
Yes, correct, yeah.
I, I think we should think about that even for our budgeting for this year because. I mean, this is a time, the, the amount of hours we're talking about, we're talking about other positions potentially. To, to be able to do some of these things, that like if we could do it, you know. Five times quicker by having the proper equipment is. You know, I, I, I don't know the timeline of C I P C versus what we're, when we're doing our budget. But this is the one vehicle that when I was looking through the presentation, I was, I was thinking we, we probably. Need this as opposed to want this.
Yeah, I think. And as Michael said, happy Mr. Company come in, it's almost like we did an audit, right? You have somebody new come in, fresh set of eyes, we didn't lead them in any way, and this is one of the conclusions he comes right to himself.
Right.
Right. Michael, what's the estimate for lifespan?
So yeah, this should last in, in at least twelve years. I think with good, good maintenance, we generally get in service, you can get fifteen years potentially.
So, I mean, effectively if we got this fifteen years ago, we'd have saved two hundred thousand dollars. And all of that.
About nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry to keep derailing you.
Um, so just to, future items in mind, we, we're actually, our special education fleet, we have four vehicles, three are in. Operations daily, one is backup or spare. We're actually in pretty good shape here. Um, we do have our spare, which is a two thousand eleven, has about a hundred and three thousand miles on it. So something that we're just, we'll monitor, but it could be something we want to consider replacing, um, in the next year or two. Uh, we've been able to kind of extend the life of some of our stairs a little bit longer than, than twelve or thirteen years. Uh, but something, something to kind of consider, keep in our mind, that we put in the plan. Um, we're going to touch the last, last category, facilities. So we're looking at really quick kind of a three-year outlook snapshot. Uh, the little school of the couple project that is the focus for fiscal twenty-two. Um, little school parking lot, it's been deferred a couple of years. We really feel like that now needs to get done. Um, you know, it's going to go through another winter and we, we really want to, uh, push for that one hard, fiscal twenty-two. The little school fascia and soft it that are, are certainly deteriorating and decaying, it needs to, uh. We're actually waiting for the final proposal for that. That's one thing, kind of a couple of companies have come out. So that's in, our budget figuring there is an estimate of it, but hopefully by the time we're next together, I might have an actual figure. Um, but I'll, I'll get to that in a moment. And then there's some other items that you can see in the, in the three-year outlook. Uh, but certainly the paving project, kind of revisited from prior years. You can kind of look at some of the data here, but it's certainly, we feel like that, that needs to be the priority for next year. Hundred thousand dollars would get, get the job done, also expand some parking spaces at, at the school for that gravel area. Where the old playground used to be. Um, we have talked about this project also, including kind of a study to see if we can improve that front loop in the drop-off area. So that is approved, we can try to certainly revisit that conversation, that project as well. Um, this is something that's new. Again, this is a recommendation by Mr. Kemp Hagen, now who came and looked at things. Uh, we had, we've had this on a small capital request for the last couple of years. It had enough funding that we thought we could, we knew we had to make some needed repairs, small, I think it's small, four or five thousand dollars, but. We think there's a lot of areas, um, that need to be addressed. Um, to certainly, uh, address some of the decay and seeing some of these photos. You know, throughout the fascia and the softness of the school. Uh, so we're waiting on a final proposal. We think it might be less than fifty thousand dollars, but certainly. Right now, a quick estimate somewhere between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars that we would be needing to address all the areas. Um, and certainly the solution would be a solution designed to increase the life expectancy. Something that might be kind of a wood alternative, still protect the aesthetics of the, the building, but. Um, certainly provide extra kind of covering durability, um, to extend that life.
I was kind of confused by the, by the description of a wood product wrapped in vinyl.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would make sense to do a vi, of, of, like a vinyl product.
Right. That replicated wood.
Yeah, so I think that might be more of what, uh, what we're fundamentally looking at, I may not word that right. But I think, yeah, I think we're looking at sort of a wood alternative kind of vinyl products.
Yep.
For enhanced durability. I think in some areas. Um, a couple of companies that came out, you certainly said they would, you know, looked, uh, certainly. Yeah, I think you, I think you referenced, you know, putting kind of a, a metal kind of interior. Um, barrier there for, you know, for, for weathering and so forth, yeah. But we would make sure we certainly selected the right solution.
Michael, just two quick comments. One, on the little school paving project.
Yeah.
I also think that this year even, I think it changes a little bit where every door is being used now. You have, you know, first and second graders walking across the parking lot that people are driving in. To try to get to their classroom door because it's not all the central, you know, the front, off the front door anymore. So you literally have tons of kids just walking across the parking lot while people are trying to come in and. Park in it. Right now, it's just, it's a mess and there's like areas that are torn up from where the playground was before. And I just think that even more so this year because every door is in use.
Right, true point.
It's concerning. Um, and then the, the second question is. Do we need anything more? Like you mentioned the security of this building because a couple of doors are being used. do we need anything more, like you mentioned the security of this building, because a couple of doors are being used. What about all the other school buildings? Because I know the other schools are also using different doors now, it always used to be one main door. Do we need to look at any security apps? Like even if it's just better lock, I mean, do we need to do anything different as a security, a different, the elementary school?
I'll certainly follow up and check into it. I, I think because we did the security upgrades with video cameras, I think we got all those areas. And they, we did a pretty thorough walkthrough with fire and the police, and not, they didn't note any areas of, um, that they were not seeing, or any, any area that was a concern to them. Um, I'll confirm that, um, with the police department and with the folks that were involved in that section. But that, does that make sense to me?
Yeah, I'll agree with that, Mr. Kamai. Uh, the police department is who brought to our attention the doors here.
Yep.
Um, based upon plans they were aware of, and one was covered and one was visible. We could definitely revisit it as well, but the reports that we had additionally were the issues that they had this year, that's why we moved to that direction. That's a great point.
Okay. I, I had a question about the paving project, uh, we're, it's a hundred thousand dollar amount, um, yeah, how long has that been there and does it need to be?
Yeah, so I think, uh, it's only been around for a little less than a year. Um, and I think we're using about two dollars and fifteen, two fifteen per square foot. When we started this, we were at, it was a dollar eighty-five, and then we even added the contingency on top of that. So we, we think it's a good number, uh, but it's a good question.
Yeah, and it feels like, I mean, we don't really have a, a quote-unquote design for like, if we were to repave the loop, would it change anything? Or it's, it's assuming at the moment it's straight paving, but, uh.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that may be fine, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not there enough, but sometimes when you start these things, it's like, oh yeah, you gotta, you need to do curbs or, or.
Yeah, it's been looked at quite a, quite a bit. I think we started it with about seven thousand and it's, it's gradually.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. I know my, my, it's gone up and it's gotten expanded a little bit because of the, something to curving and so forth.
It's a Bernard had mentioned that like, there was going to be a change to the design.
Yeah.
They were going to be going in more, because there's going to be drop-off in the back of the building where the preschool is being dropped off.
Right.
Because I think that was one of the concerns, and that was, was that, you could only, you could only fit like six cars in the actual, where they do the drop-off here.
Yeah.
It's a very tight little area, and there, I think they were going to have it go through and then have a separate drop-off.
That was one idea, yeah.
Yeah.
That I remember.
On the back for, for one level and then go on the other one.
The town, the town, it's actually the town engineer and the DEW at the time had kind of involved, just kind of told us they would do part of that design mark.
Right, right.
Which was saving and hiring sort of a third party.
Right.
But you can certainly look into that as well.
Okay.
Okay, um, so moving on to some of the future projects. Um, certainly the, the hood school modular demo removal, that's been in there a couple of years. We've been able to keep that unit, those units in good, in good shape to kind of continue to kind of defer this project. But at some point, um, it's going to have to be revisited. The bachelor school rooftop unit, some of those are starting to have some costly repairs. We think we need a plan to start addressing some of these six rooftop units. Uh, right now, we're, we've gotten them in good, working, working order, but I think just to continue to kind of assess and revisit as we look at the plan. I talked about some of the little school mods and the, the roof restoration and the borders of the hood. Um, energy management system, that's, we'd love to be able to fully upgrade that system at the hood and the little to include the entire building. Right now, for remodeling, uh, it is costly, but it's something we would really allow us to really fine tune and regulate those buildings, maybe be greater than what, what we've been able to do. Similar to how we've been able to work this building and batch. Uh, so just another outlook of some of the facility-related projects that are included in the plan. Again, it's certainly heavily, heavily focused on the, on the elementary schools, with this school definitely being the newest, newest building. We're kind of going to continue to explore, um, energy efficiency measures, certainly some solar. Continuing to work with RMD on what solar could look like, and waiting for information from them on their RFI that they submitted. Supposed to get information about a week ago, I have not gotten that yet, I reached out to them this week about it. Um, so all, all things are part of the plan. In terms of the process, so we're looking for school committee feedback and approval this month and next, in November. Um, requests are being told to be due at the end of November to the CI PC this year, which is a little bit delayed by about six, seven weeks. CI PC would then restart their meeting in November and December. Uh, they would look to, I believe, finalize their rankings, um, sometime at the end of March, beginning of April, and then I think that presentation goes around the select board, um, towards the middle of April, and then obviously town meeting too. Any other questions?
Just my only other thought was, I say this every year, but the demolition of space, we need all the space we can get right now.
Right.
I'd be a little bit concerned with removing any units, even if they're not there right now.
So you know what, right, so you know, we would actually take over the, the seam classrooms.
Yeah.
Um, so we would, maybe actually, it was rental revenue.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's a very good point, we would, there would be one classroom that we would remove. Um, because it would be a swap, it's four modular classrooms in this three seam classroom, seam. And seam is in that, the mods right now, occupying two of those units in the mods right now.
And so why isn't that you're, you're working to replace the little school modular, but not the?
The study that we've always been a part of, now again, we can revisit it, but the little school with the, with that being commonly where the, the young are childhood and the pre-k program is housed, and looking at what their needs are. Um, and there's, there's no rental in it, we didn't think it was at all possible for us to lose that space and not, not be able to replace it. Um, we don't know where we could put the pre-k, for example, in the, in that, those, those classrooms being utilized. Um, because we thought it was more possible, we always thought it was more possible with hood, because they did have some swing space with use of the, the maker's space room and the library, and a variety of different things they could do. The maker's space could move to maybe the areas of the library at times, and in fact, there was three rooms that we were renting. Uh, we felt we potentially could save a, a huge amount of money with, you know, four modular units. We crossed the town, you know, a million dollars, a significant amount of money, um, by, by not going that direction.
I, I, I know that one of the thoughts was, um, and Dr. Daley had mentioned before about like, we're going to address the full day kindergarten cost and early childcare development. Some of the ideas involve having space to do things with. And I just, again, I just wonder if with the, with the plan that you're going to talk about with twenty-twenty-five plan, if, you know, the, that's going to be part of it, and talking about space would be part of it, that would, would end for this discussion in any way?
It, it definitely is something that we've talked about, I just don't know if the mods or that space just based on their useful life.
Yeah, well, or, or replacement being something where it could be.
I think, I think what you're asking is, should we, should we be demolishing and replacing, not demolishing out the hood?
Yeah, I mean, we can revisit that, I mean, we kind of, we've gotten those mods in a good, you know, a couple of years ago, where we're thinking, you know, the time might be coming, um, you know, we've got, we've been able to do some repairs and address some of the issues, um, to expand the life of those units. So, um, fortunately, we've been able to kind of keep moving it out a year or two years, as we reassess each, each summer and, and we've been able to salvage, but then it's really not going to last forever, you know, we've gotten to that point. We can, we can revisit that conversation.
Or even an addition as opposed to not, I, I, again, I don't know, maybe we could get a lot more expensive, but.
I think there's towns, there's needs, there's a lot of things that people are discussing that are needed, um, that go even beyond just the schools. And so maybe there's a way to combine some of those things into a project that adds on to the school, or uses another piece of land, or certainly could see, could see expanding, uh, that program, combining early childhood would save, you know, it's a long-term investment that would centralize some of that. I think some of the things we've done this year because of COVID with, with allowing, you know, access for employees to have children, with childcare, it's just, these are, these are positive things that we can continue to build on. And there's ways to combine, you know, I've seen a lot of towns successfully combine early childhood and senior support, you know. So those are two needs for this town, maybe there's a way to continue to think about that. And I think those are conversations for this committee and for, for others with the town. I know there's a lot of projects out there, but we need to see what we can do. It's a good thought, though, yeah.
Good point.
Thank you, Mr. Kamai.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, oh wait, you're all looking at me, actually. Next, superintendent's goals, Dr. Daley.
Thank you, I'm going to share my screen again in a moment, but, um, what I'm sharing tonight are my goals for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Uh, as you know, I, I completed my, my first year last year through January through July with my first set of goals. Uh, it was a little bit different over the summer, um, than we had planned, and then we were able to, uh, come back together here in the fall with a new set of goals for this year. So I was able to meet with the evaluation subcommittee, and I proposed those goals. And then tonight, I'm hoping to, um, to share my final goals for approval. The, the plan, I don't have, uh, in the packet, the, the overall schedule, but I, I can summarize that as being, uh, that the goals would go from this fall and they would be done by this June, it would be this school year's plan. And my reason really for doing this tonight was to get out ahead, I want to model my goals uh, ahead of what everyone else is doing in the district. So I'm very happy that we have, um, the process for educator evaluation for administrators and for our, uh, for our teachers this year, and I think it's also very good that we have, uh, our, you know, template that I'm using is the same model. So it's going to look a little different to you possibly than what you've seen in the past. I'm trying to use the updated Department of Ed templates. I'm trying to model with my goals, what you're seeing with the administrator goals, what you're seeing with the teacher goals. Trying to have some alignment between, um, the school committee goals, the district improvement plan, that, you know, we're still operating under NPS twenty-twenty-one, but where there's certainly some changes with the addition of equity and other pieces we talked about within our PS twenty-twenty-five. I'm trying to get these out tonight, so that our administrators will have their goals ready to go. So that on November third, when we meet with all the teachers who are setting up their goals, they can model theirs after, after what we've set up. Uh, so I'm, I share them with you in the packet, I'm attempting to put this on the screen. There's so many pieces here, but are there any questions about the goals that I have? You want me to go through them, or what would you like me to do?
Can you clarify the date again that this evaluation is for, September twenty to June twenty-one?
Yep, so it would be, this is year two of, of a one-year plan, and then there'd be a third one-year plan, that would be the goal.
And I, I would ask the subcommittee first, maybe if they have any specific thoughts on this compared to last year outlooks and.
I shared some feedback with Dr. Daley at the time, but, uh, really overwhelmingly that these are great goals, that, uh, the concept of trying to align vertically from the top all the way down to the teachers, I think is, uh, a very smart move for, for the region. And, yeah, I mean, I've kind of thought this would be a time for you guys to share any, any extra feedback that you, uh, might have. One thing I'll, I'll ask Dr. Daley, pretty inconsequential, this document you've put into this. Uh, it's not an official document at all, or it, there's a couple of little errors in it that you might want to.
Absolutely.
You have the, the end date listed as June twenty-twenty, not twenty-one.
That's my, that's the correct.
And then, uh, I think out of habit at the end, when you sign it, you sign the evaluator line instead of the, uh.
Oh yeah, that's right, I'm the, I'm the educator. The one time I get to be the educator.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's, that's all, it's all a work in progress.
Right, 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 but the goals, the goals are what this is about, the goals are, are, are right where they should be. Um, I'll, I'll call one thing out that, um, that came up during the subcommittee meeting, that I think you guys should, should have your attention drawn to, which is that, uh, Dr. Daley, he does it in the first goal here, he's listed the, um, the, the criteria for excellent, exemplary, excuse me, for exemplary. And, uh, and that's something that I think is just a, a terrific idea to model, but, uh, the goal is to be exemplary in. And, you know, we're going to be evaluating him to make sure that, that he's proficient and hopefully is exemplary, but, uh, that's one of the ones I thought was just a, and it wasn't even a goal, it's just, it's just a good idea, uh, a good practice to kind of have that trust in evaluation, also, uh, be shooting for the, the top mark.
I, I took the advice of the committee from last year and definitely pulled back the focus, I have many less indicators. Um, still representative of the full rubric, um, and I did a student learning goal as well as a professional practice goal and in addition four district goals, similar, similar to last year. But a real focus on specific indicators that are aligned closely with the goals. They certainly build on the goals from last year, um, similar to what the teachers are doing, I wanted to have one goal that was related to, um, social justice. I wanted to have one goal that was related to, um, the hybrid teaching and learning. And they're a little bit more indirect in this way, um, than, than perhaps the teachers will be. There is a piece of this, uh, document as well that I'm still, uh, working on, where we identify student learning measures and anticipated student learning gain. And what I thought the subcommittee pointed out that I thought was a great idea was, uh, because my student learning connections are indirect, I will have student learning measures and also student learning gain, but then I'll include administrator learning measures and administrator learning gains. What do I hope that my administrative team is able to benefit from my goals? Um, and then similarly indirectly how students, and then to model that would be administrators, where they'll think, how do my teachers and staff benefit directly from my goals, and how do students indirectly benefit? I think that was a great suggestion, because just having to answer those questions helps us always get back on focus for why am I doing this goal? Yes, it's to improve my, my professional growth as an administrator, but it's also to directly impact these folks and indirectly always going back to students. Uh, and then that helps to carry the true line to the teachers who, when they make their goals, it always needs to be connected to what, what is it going to be for the students that are in the class, which I think is great. So again, by using the same exact form and by following that model, I think that'll be very helpful, so. Um, this does, yeah, as mentioned, this was a draft that I'm just getting approved tonight, but it continues to be a living document, it's going to be shared. So my goal is to get this all ready to go, so it can be shared out as a model for administrators, we're meeting next week, um, to polish those, to get ready for our November third PE day, where we're going to spend, uh, a significant amount of time with our teachers doing ed eval. Again, not the paperwork part of ed eval, but the point of all of us as educators this year are grappling with these two goals. Ed eval is a great framework for accountability to make sure that we're all doing what we need to do. Um, and so I think that, that will, that will be well received and time well spent on it.
So my couple of thoughts and questions and comments, and to be perfectly transparent, evaluation is my weakest part of being a school committee member, to be honest, like I haven't been on the subcommittee. It's, the rubrics are overwhelming to me, not how, what I see in, in, in my general, general day. Um, I, I, I noticed the fewer, you know, goals and, and fewer indicators, which I appreciate, um, that was the first thing I noticed. Two quick questions, number one, on the goals, some of them say individual, some of, some of them say team.
Yep.
Wouldn't there be sort of a, an individual component to each of them and a team component, or like, why is it one or the other?
Sure, there, there is, um, that's something that I really wanted, I, I've always felt a little disconnected from the superintendent's goals as an, as an administrator. And so I wanted to really model, um, I'm, I'm asking all of my administrators that are at the administrative council levels, the principals and directors, to have six goals, which that has not always been the case. But I also don't want to overburden them with this, so I'm saying, those goals are already in your school improvement plan, or they're team goals that we're working on together. So I, I'm hoping to see a lot of their goals a part of my team, because we are a team. So as I'm, as I'm working on my goal, we're actually all doing this stuff together. And then they're also working on some of their goals as a team. So I think a lot of the goals are team goals, but some of them, um, you can't think of them as more individual. This is something that I'm doing personally to, to grow. And so I agree that there's an individual aspect of every team goal, there's a team aspect of every individual goal, we can't do any of this on our own. Uh, and so sometimes you kind of go back and forth, but team is usually going to indicate that somebody else has that as a goal, as opposed to just they're a part of it. You know, Mike, I mean, I have a goal in here that I'm not going to do without Michael's help, right? But it might not necessarily be Michael's goal, so that's why it's about a team, if that makes sense. So team is usually going to indicate that most likely. So team is usually going to indicate that most likely there's somebody else with a very similar goal. As an eval, not just as we need to do this in order to do our job.
But it's still fair to evaluate you as an individual on a team goal?
It is, and that's built into our system. It's actually encouraged pretty strongly to have individual and team goals for the teachers, so I think it's good to model that all the way up. So, but again, I think as far as being a superintendent, I would say that these, you know, I'm accountable for whether these team goals get, get. So there's no loss of accountability with that.
And then on district goal number one, does it have any focus indicators or elements?
The, they, they focus indicators.
Like all the other ones you referenced, different focus.
They all, they all, yeah. And as I said before, like, I wanted to get this tonight because I wanted to get out ahead of next Thursday, ahead of next November 3rd. If I were doing this to give you something polished, I would not have given you this till November 5th. But that's after the PE day, so I'm trying to just get the best I can. So I apologize for being slightly in draft form, but it is a Google Doc. And like, so even what was set out in the packet has been updated since then. They all will have all of those components.
No, I mean, what's good to me? Oh, that's up.
Great, I could see that you took the feedback from last year, and they made a lot of sense for me and seem to be aligned with what you spoke about with the teachers as well. So the alignment, I think, is a great idea.
Yeah, the only other thing I'll say on the COVID one, I mean, I have a feeling in a year we still will be dealing with at least the aftermath of it, not still COVID. But, I mean, I think a lot of it's going to be how to implement like changes going forward, not just COVID, but like overall. I think that's going to be the transition. What we're going to learn from this is, just like we were just talking about with Michael Connelly, with Michael, about, you know, where do we go after this? We had to, we had to have Chromebooks in order to get through this, but then how do we best use that? And so a lot of the COVID things, I think, are just more transitions to the future teaching and learning.
That's true. Did you talk to the subcommittee as well about COVID? I just, I just feel as far as being transparent and publishing this in the website, I feel like I want to be able to show folks that COVID is our focus. I mean, this is, this is this year, and I want to show that our goal is that we're focused on this year. But I think it's written to be broadly, so essentially I updated our, you know, the school safety goals from last year and incorporated the concept of COVID. But it's really all the processes, procedures, and protocols around safety through this umbrella lens of COVID, which is what we're up against this year, obviously. I think it's, I think it's fair to say it's going to go through at least June, then we'll be still talking about it.
Well, and there's two parts to that. That, and also, as you say, whatever trajectory we're on, COVID is changing that trajectory and changing its direction to some degree. It's going to figure that, you know, part of everything is going to be figuring that out, your goals, our goals.
They're common? So you would like a vote to approve these, Dr. Daley, is that correct?
If you could, I mean, I can also say that I'll bring back the finalized version in a few weeks. But this is just, it's essentially a concept that these are the goals for the year. I just want to have them in place so I can show them, the administrators and then to the teachers.
I have a motion on that. That's my last.
Sure. I move the, that way. I move to accept Dr. Daley's educator evaluation. Thank you very much. Educator evaluation plan.
Okay, roll call. Together, Chris.
Uh.
Janine.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
Rich.
Aye.
You all? Okay, moving on, we have minutes next. On these ones, on the minutes, we're going to, just to point out that some people were not there, so if you're not there, you should have stayed.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the October 5th executive session. It doesn't state it, but Ms. Botwell was not there, present. I don't know if it matters if it says that she's not there, if she wasn't there in the minute.
Did the executive session mention?
Yeah, it just has the four of us.
They dealt with it differently on the two different minutes. The executive session didn't have her listed, the next one said not present.
Right, so I didn't know that.
It was a four of them, so I think it's different.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was right there. I just.
I think both are accurate.
That's his point. I didn't know if it needed to be considered, so.
I can double check that with you.
Okay.
You can see, that's a good one.
Okay, so for the executive session of October 5th, as written, unless it needs to be amended to acknowledge Ms. Botwell. I, yes, but I forget how I was saying it. Anyway, so approve the minutes.
I'll second.
No.
Rich, a second. One point of discussion also is this was a meeting where some were in person and some were not in person. I don't know if the minutes should reflect that.
Yeah, I did think that with this permanent.
I don't know with everything going on, because I don't know.
The whole meeting is being called virtual.
Virtual, okay.
And we're just, we just happen to be here. You know, as far as public record, so I.
Okay, so it's counted virtually the way it is.
I think when we go back to normal, and if then we do allow a member to participate virtually, then we should specify, but I think here, as you say, we're.
Correct. And again, because I do know that you should note it in a regular meeting if some are in person and somebody's remote.
Yep. Maybe we can amend, I mean, let's take that out of our budget, because that's, but it's technically posted as a virtual meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote on that. So Janine.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Diana. And I'll vote aye as well, so that's a four, zero. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the open session minutes of October 5th, as written.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any exact same discussion as we just had about all those points?
Yeah, but yeah.
Okay, all good. Roll call vote, Janine.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, that's a four, zero. Thank you. Budget update. Mr. Connolly, anything?
Oh, no, just anything.
One question on budget. Just a quick question, bus contract, when is that going to start the discussion? Because I know this is the year that we have to renegotiate the bus contract, correct?
That's correct. So typically, I would not send that out to bid until the beginning of December or so. Bids typically come in, after even doing it early. Bids would even come in January, beginning of January. So we would have bid numbers in certainly in time for budget conversations to come out. Bid February to the beginning of March, so that's typically the timeframe.
Just a question I was wondering.
I will say on this, the one thing I was going to note during the opening, but I guess the budget relates as well. We're happy to see that USDA extended food service, the free meals program to the end of the school year from December, which is, which is great. We've got a couple of communications over the last seven or eight days, so my office, two families above food service. And one this morning that clarified that it's not extended to the end of the school year. So again, we just love to see families both learning remotely and students remote learning, in-person learning, taking advantage of that opportunity. We're definitely, you know, ready to handle additional mail and meet that need. I, very quickly, I analyzed some of the numbers from September to numbers through October 13th or so, or the end of last week. And our mails are up by about 10 cents in October than they were trying to be in September. But I think we can certainly do more in handling mail. See that certainly in the remote program as well. So a couple of communications have gone out confirming that, and I think families have seen that, and that impression to me than today about it, so hopefully we see an increase in participation.
Does that pick up mostly in school lunches, or, I mean, is there any pickup in the remote, just pickup?
It's a little bit of both, it's a little bit of both. Definitely there's an in-school lunch, but also the remote program picks up as well.
Okay, and you don't have to, you don't have to order in advance for that, you can just show up that day?
Yeah, no order in advance. We started off just to get an idea of what participation would be. We started a Google form, but the previous committee said, don't worry about doing any of that, you can arrive, and we will definitely have a meal, breakfast and lunch meal for you.
Yeah, we should, and I try to promote that again.
Yeah, I was just thinking, partly because, and obviously, we want to get, we have our own reasons for wanting to get as many people as possible, but to make sure, you know, people who, whose circumstances change too, that all of a sudden, you know, that this is available.
Yep.
Yeah, you get federal funding at the paid cost of mail for every breakfast and lunch, so it is helpful for revenue standpoint.
And we want to keep everybody employed here and kind of have more, have our staff to be good if people were taking events and that.
I'll be showing up. If I may just say too, I've been around all the schools at lunchtime and see the kids very safely distanced, but happy, happy. I mean, it does, it's just different, but they're very much a lunchroom still. But the box lunches are really pretty neat, the kids really like them. I've asked the kids that like them, and they just, it was just a great transition, you know, as we keep saying the word pivot, right? But the animat governed her team and Michael has worked so hard to really make this adjustment, and it's, you know, it's very different, but it's worked very well to this box economy, so it's been great.
Thank you.
Not on the remote dates, I haven't driven over, but they've all been eating at school, they've been there.
I stood out on the remote dates. Every day when you're out here, 11 to 12, right by the parent pickup area, it's amazing interest. And it is steady, there's a steady flow with that hour of cars, so it has steadily increasing. I think every time we kind of do a reminder and reach out, we can get five or six or seven or eight more new, you know, parents or cars that day, so.
My middle school son may be the only student that watches these school committee meetings on YouTube afterwards, so we'll get to shut up to him. But his favorite thing of middle school is that he has a choice of lunch now, is that like there's a whole buffet, and so he's very excited every day that he has many options to choose from, so.
I think for some of the parents that are home with kids, there's just so much to do to maintain all their different schedules, and like one less thing you have to worry about is making lunch for them. So there is an option that I keep just definitely thinking about.
Okay, something out there, but I'll go in 10 minutes on it. Bids and donations, anything on that one?
None at this time.
I think you removed staffing.
Yes.
But I have a couple of questions on that. I can't get that past, so. I mean, my only question, Dr. Daley, I mean, first and foremost, I know you've been posting for remote learning assistance and building subs. Do we have building subs, the building subs are every, just every school yet, and what about remote learning people?
Yeah, we're.
We are still looking for more building subs. We get a communication, reach out to the community, into the parents, see if they make interest. We're offering job sharing for building subs for parents that may be willing to work on days their child is in school, learning remotely, just kind of job share for bigger schools. So right now, I think where the biggest need is to be done is the little elementary school, as well as what soon will be in the high school at the moment, but soon. And I think we've also talked about in our last administrative meeting, in addition to a goal of having two building subs at each school, or be more than that, of job sharing, code A and code B. One or two floater, floater building subs that may be willing to kind of go between the elementary schools, potentially, or even the middle school and high school in the same building. You know, when the need arises, we can see that could have potentially, you know, a need to be there for that.
Yeah, we were very concerned upfront, and we still are, about not having the substitutes coming from anywhere, you know? But I think we see the need to have a bit of a floater. And honestly, it came out through the middle school, when you have the number of teachers that were impacted in the quarantine at the middle school. We don't want to be in a situation where we have to close school because there's not enough adults, right? So we can have some others that we can borrow from in different situations. I think, I think we were able to stay open one day because we were able to borrow a substitute from the high school, be on the same campus, which is great. But in that situation where there could be some other, you know, because some days, there's going to be just a number of staff that might be ill, and then if there's a quarantine as well, one building is just going to need more help on those days. And if we can have that floater, you know, so just the idea that that adult would only be in these five schools, they wouldn't be going elsewhere, but they might have some flexibility. It might be even more limited, as Michael said, it might be just the elementary, just the secondary, but a little bit more. So we still need some support there, and there's positions posted, and we certainly would love folks to apply.
So what are the requirements, what are your requirements for that?
So essentially, I don't think it's two years of actual school education is the minimum requirement.
Folks that sort of like to enjoy, like, if you're eligible to.
You know, you never know, I might look for change. Yeah.
On the remote learning, so that, that is posting, did get a lot of interest.
So I know there's one school in Florida that made a hire. I'm thinking the others must be closed, but I've been monitoring that posting, it's really my interest for that.
Yeah, just the one hire so far that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
But that's going to go a long way to help our teachers in the classrooms with additional support.
Just don't tell them to hire whoever doesn't get it as a sub. They're building subs.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I did that, I wasn't there. I was just thinking of that as I was looking, I was scrolling down.
I had a thought, and I was just like, wait, I thought there was a staffing, like, he's trying to shut me up here. That never works.
That's what we're doing.
That never works. So bids and donations, subcommittee updates, athletic subcommittee met, Ms. Botwell, Ms. Vrano.
I wish I had the agenda in front of me. No, well, it was interesting when the meeting started, I think, I mentioned this last time we got together, within February, so I happily pulled my notes and was looking at it. But Mr. Johnson let us know that the banners are being hung. There has been some talk about the eighth graders playing up to JV, and I believe that's on hold at this point due to the COVID. The shed that we did get for the hood school.
I see, tennis court.
Tennis courts got blown like a week or two after it was put into the woods and got destroyed, so we're looking for, to get a new shed for that. The scoreboard's been installed, there's a portable sound system, a wireless remote for the scoreboard, and the dust off the run holds due to COVID, but they're like.
The folks that were going to install it are not in school.
That is, right.
But we do like that partnership to want to. Yeah, and essentially, I think if some of what we discussed was what I discussed earlier about the winter sports, what that might look like. So again, we're thrilled to have kids on the field, and the kids are thrilled to have anything that's somewhat looking like a normal fall. I think the kids are thrilled with that. And it's been, it's been great, we've done the games and everything, everything's going well. Definitely different, but it's going well. And we want to offer as much of that as we can moving forward. It is going to be a challenge with the winter sports, but keeping hope alive for that winter season, and maybe something can happen a little bit later. We're just going to keep thinking that through. We did have some discussions about that floater season, for example, if there's football and we have to shovel snow off the field, what does it look like? All those kinds of discussions are, because we're going to, we're going to keep trying to figure out ways, working with our, you know, rep department to make these things happen.
We talked about the co-op, did you make the decision on that? I know we kind of did like a quasi-coop.
Sure.
But I don't know if really it mattered.
I know Mr. Johnson is going to bring that forward. The subcommittee definitely still supported the concept of a co-op. And so now it's just a matter of figuring out what that would look like with these sports if they go forward. But if, you know, there didn't seem to be an overwhelming concern about North Reading students being alongside students from other towns. And I think, I think the thing there is, you know, we are very mindful of cohort mixing and all that, but this is happening with extracurriculars elsewhere. Students are playing club sports and club teams, and there's a lot of that. To not, you know, to use that as a reason not to have an opportunity for wrestling or girls hockey, whatever sports that we're discussing. We didn't feel that there was enough at this time to do that. Now that might, you know, the other towns may be different, and there might not be support, but, you know, nor. but, you know, North Reading, we felt that we were going to move forward with that. Whether those sports even run is another question as well. You know, I think wrestling is one that's been discussed a lot. Obviously, it's been a difficult one to deal with COVID. But, you know, we're still willing to consider the co-op idea. So thank you, that was.
So on the winter sports, are we waiting for guidance, or are we just trying to figure out plans?
So there's some guides about indoors coming out. There's going to be some updates to that as well. We're always staying tuned to MIAA. But really now, we're also looking at the Cal League and what's up there. So again, what's being discussed at the moment now, and we're getting closer to Thanksgiving, usually that starts the Monday after. No one's talking about like, oh, yeah, we're ready to go on that Monday. So I think everyone's still trying to.
Even practice or, you know, getting out.
Yeah, so I, you know, I talked to Mr. Johnson, and he's still impressed about it. It seems like anything we do might be a little bit delayed. It's just, it's just that much more difficult to do things inside. Trying to figure that out.
My only, I mean, if I recall, MIAA gave a list of accommodations for the various sports, like, you know, we're playing defensive side. I mean, no henning, no hands, no throwing it in. Like, there was a lot of specific accommodations.
We don't have any of that for those.
We don't have that for winter sports yet. And so I think that's important. And the only thing that concerns me is they put this floater season, there's supposed to be four seasons. How on earth are we going to fit four seasons in if they don't even have the guidance on how to start the second season out?
The only other thing I remember is Mike gave the numbers, and I believe that we're doing very, well, pretty good with the budget.
Right, so I mean, there's certainly some uncertainty there, but how this is going to play out with the winter and COVID and what happens. So we have good participation for the five sports or so that went in fall. And, you know, should we, should everything be able to occur? I think in some of the adjustments that we've been able to make and what we've been able to carry over with the end of fiscal '20, you know, we think the budget's in reasonable condition, you know? But certainly we have to learn for that. The revenues are being known, and we have to mark that.
Okay. For athletics, fine arts subcommittee, over to my left, Mr. McGowan, your pop of salute.
Sure. Yeah, we met the same day. It was a, it was a great meeting. It was great to see everybody. I think last February was the last time. The first thing that really came up was curious, the school committee members, community members, what is like in the art room, and kind of how, how do things look in the COVID regime? And the response that we got back was overwhelmingly optimistic and positive. The kids are coming in with this fantastic attitude of willingness to try things. The teachers have had a lot of real problems, like every teacher's has dissolved, and they've been finding really novel ways to kind of approach them. Couple of things that came up were like a program where you can post up virtual art so that people kind of, kids can see and plug in and see what other kids have made. And then they can share with teachers, post it up online, and everybody can kind of see and comment on them and be inspired by them. Trying to come up with projects that use scarce materials because there's going to be a material shortage over enough time. The art teachers had to compensate by sending kids home with some materials so they can interact from home. And right now that works, but they're kind of planning ahead that way creatively. And overall, it's such a hard situation, being in a hard job. And what I forgot was that they're doing a fantastic job, which is not the, but to find a point on being creative and solving.
It was really great to actually, you know, talk to some teachers. Obviously, this is a very enthusiastic and creative group, but, you know, one of the things we don't do too often, so it's actually one of the great things about this committee, I think, is that you actually get to interact with teachers directly. So it was great to talk to teachers the first time since we came back into school. And as Chris said, their enthusiasm is amazing, as it always is. And I think as avatars for the whole staff, I think, you know, we see that enthusiasm in a lot of other ways, on social media, and folks who have kids in schools probably see it as well. And it's very impressive, so. Good meeting.
Evaluation subcommittee?
We thought we'd meet at that today. We, Dr. Daley, as well.
Here we go. Subcommittee schedule, athletics subcommittee meeting again November 18th at 1:00 PM virtual. Finarts subcommittee, November 18th, 1:30 PM virtual. Do we have a finance planning team meeting scheduled?
Wasn't able to pinpoint the date. I know it's a discussed, I think it's on the horizon or something.
It feels like that's been very fluid and letting people know a couple, a day or two before.
Administrator report, anything, Dr. Daley?
None.
Correspondent?
None.
Teacher business, November 5th, we have a meeting at 6:30 PM. November 19th, we have a 6:30 PM meeting as well.
So, sorry, you were trying to close. The question, the last meeting, did you decide on the batch principal or representative? Do you need to do that today?
I had a note on that as well, yes, for the subcommittee. Did we want to appoint somebody from the school committee?
Well, that's a good point. Probably should do it tonight.
Yeah, so do we have anybody that is interested in that?
I'm happy to do it since I have the titles at the batch. I think I might be the only one here that does.
I would defer to you personally.
I'm happy to do it because I have a stake in the game.
Anybody else have any interest, or?
Because I have a ton of time with my hands.
There you go. Well, that's the only thing, so I mean, you know.
No, I will, I will make the time. And, you know, if there's, if I find some type of trend where I find a challenge, I'll see if I can send it to them. Hopefully, I'll be able to.
I hope for it to be very flexible. I've had a lot of interest from teachers and parents that have written in, and so hoping it's not a huge amount of time commitment, and we can be very flexible if people say. Thank you.
Okay. So to me.
Let this vote, I think a vote, Botwell, to be the representative, committee representative on the search committee for the batch of the president.
Okay.
Hello, Rich.
Hi.
Janine.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Diana.
Hi.
I'm an a as well, a zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just provided a similar update, that the position was posted today, the interim position. And we are having two scheduled as follow the timeline. Monday, 26, there's a staff forum, and then also a parent.
Posted internally or externally or both?
Both.
Okay, thank you. Michael Scorsese, that is now, so we, time to go. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.[1776.45]